Tyler Stegall, Global SK Talent Acquisition Manager, Matt Masaros, who is our Blue Oval SK Environmental Health and Safety Risk Manager, Dr. Justin Pate, who is the President and CEO of Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College, and Sarah Vaughn, Global SK Community Engagement Coordinator for Kentucky. Before we jump in to the discussion with the panel, I'd like to start by just providing you a little bit of background information about Blue Oval SK. Blue Oval SK is a 50/50 joint venture between Ford Motor Company and SKON of South Korea that is producing advanced batteries for future Ford and Lincoln brand vehicles. These two manufacturing companies share a vision and complementary expertise and are partnering to move faster together toward an electrified America. SK has 30 years of battery safety and technology leadership, and Ford has about 120-year history of producing some of the world's famous vehicles. The site is a $5.8 billion investment by Ford and SKON. It is going to be home to two battery plants. They are twin battery plants that we refer to as Kentucky One and Kentucky Two. I'm sure that you have seen them along I-65 as you were zooming by. It's hard to miss. One is nearly complete externally, and the other one is just now coming out of the ground. I hope you had a chance to see some of the slideshow that was up on the screen just showing the progress at the plant. Construction progress of Blue Oval SK Battery Park is on schedule and bringing Ford closer to its target of producing an annual run rate of 2 million electric vehicles globally. So you're going to hear more about SK's plans to train 5,000 future employees, the knowledge and skills to build advanced batteries for the future, some of our concerns that we've heard from the public around safety and the environment, and we'll also go over starting wages and benefits package that were just announced a few weeks ago. So we want to make sure that we explain the precautions that we are taking also to protect the environment. Blue Oval SK Battery Park is also committed to being a good neighbor and looking for ways to partner with the community in addition to creating new jobs. So let's get started talking about those new jobs because we're hearing a lot about it. Joel and Tyler, I'm going to start with the two of you. And first, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll get right into it. Joel, why don't you go first?
Yeah, thanks Ursula. So, good evening, y'all. I wanted to let you know first, I'm from Detroit, so that's all I have from a southern speak repertoire. But I'm going to get there, I promise you that. So again, I'm Joel Probst. I am the HR manager for the first battery plant being built in Glendale. So I have approximately 25 years of experience, all in HR, with Ford Motor Company. So I've worked in multiple plants, multiple staff roles, and I was also on the EV HR team that helped stand up Blue Oval SK. So it was really a natural progression for me to come over and work in the plant and lead the HR team. Super excited to be here, very excited to have this opportunity, and over the moon excited about this company and what it can do for the community, Kentucky in itself, as well as Tennessee. So looking forward to moving down here and being part of the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel. Okay, it's okay to applaud. We accept applause. Thank you. Tyler, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, happy to. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyler Stegall. I'm the Talent Acquisition Manager here at Blue Oval SK, and I am not from Detroit. I come to you from Memphis, Tennessee. Since about this time last year, I've made Kentucky my second home and have loved spending time here. So a little bit about me and my claim to fame, I was hired as the first joint venture employee, so the first Blue Oval SK employee about this time last year. And since then, we've been working to stand the company up, and it's been a very exciting time. You know, my funny story is they hired me on a Monday, and I was the first employee, and then we figured out how to run payroll on Wednesday of the next week. It was a little bit nerve-wracking, but you know, that's the fun of this joint venture, that we're building this thing from the ground up, and it's really been a pleasure. So Ursula asked my favorite question to talk about jobs. I look out into the audience, and I see many talented future recruiters, you guys. And so I'm happy to talk to you about the jobs that we have at Blue Oval SK. We have many opportunities for people with all skill levels to plug into our organization. Right now on our website, we have posted everything from engineering roles, if you have a background in electrical engineering, or manufacturing, or chemical engineering, there are opportunities for you. And then we go all the way over to a master black belt. So if your karate skills are good, we've got a position for you. In all seriousness, we have the master black belt position that is one for someone who has Ling Six Sigma background to come into our plant and help us in that space. Most recently, we made the announcement for our hourly positions. Our production operator and maintenance technician have now posted. So whether you come from a production environment and you're looking to continue that career path, or whether you're getting into it for the first time, we have opportunities for you, as well as corporate roles in finance, and accounting, and human resources, and so on. So happy to talk more about all of those things this evening.
Well, there's lots of questions about it. So let me just ask, Joel, could you tell us how we determined what our starting wages and benefits package would look like?
Yes, thanks. It's a good question. So the Blue Oval SK team, so the HR team, the comp and ben team, the leadership team, conducted comprehensive wage and benefit analysis, along with benchmarking studies. So that, in addition to, we worked with a third-party vendor to really ensure that we had a good look at local, regional, national, as well as industry competitive market data.
And is that something that we continue to look at over time, or?
We do, particularly because the market can change. It fluctuates here and there, especially year over year. So yes, we're continuing to evaluate it, analyze it, and we will work with our third-party vendor to make sure that we stay competitive.
Okay. So Tyler, why don't you tell us, what is the starting pay in hourly positions?
Sure. So there are two hourly positions that are available now, the production operator and the maintenance technician. The production operator's starting pay is $21 per hour, and the maintenance technician is $26 per hour. The range we're operating in for our hourly roles is $21 to $29 per hour. So there's a lot of opportunity for growth for all of our new team members.
Okay.
In that same vein, our compensation philosophy is comprehensive. When we talk about compensation, we look at many elements. So there is the hourly wage that I just talked about, but there's also growth opportunity that we build into those wages. So we look for opportunities for team members to receive ongoing bonuses and ongoing raises throughout their time with our organization. So we feel it's very important for an opportunity for growth. So our team members enjoy two bonuses annually, and they also enjoy two wage increases annually. So every three months, you are receiving some type of incentive to improve your compensation, which is pretty exciting. On top of compensation in terms of pay, we also have great benefits. We're told we have some of the best benefits in the region through Blue Cross Blue Shield. We offer two medical plans, a low-cost plan, and as well as a plan that helps you enroll your entire family for a low monthly premium. So that keeps your deductibles low and helps you take care of your family. So medical plans, dental and vision are also offered, as well as discounts for Ford and Lincoln brand vehicles as an employee of Blue Oval SK. So lots of great benefits to talk about on top of that hourly wage that we discussed.
That does sound like a very nice package when it's all put together. Tyler, if you, you know, have applied, there may be some people in the audience who have applied, or some people who are watching online who've applied, how do you check the status of your application?
Great question. You know, there are opportunities when you go to our website, you can apply for multiple roles. So I get this question a lot, how do I check the status of my application? Very simple, you log back into the profile where you created your application. In the top right corner, your name is there. You can click on your name, navigate to the application that you submitted, and see your status in real time. There are multiple statuses that you may see. There are many steps in our hiring process. There's a step where we review applications. There's a step where you go through our interviews process, you meet with some of our team members, and we learn more about you. And then we also have those who are receiving offers and going through our onboarding process. So you may see different statuses there. You may see them for an extended period of time. We are onboarding team members in short groups. You know, it will take some time to reach our staff-up goal for each of our plants. So in the meantime, while we're working toward that, you know, we'll bring on groups in waves. And so you may not see much activity on your application, especially since there are a lot of people interested right now. Give us some time, and we'll get to every application that comes into our portal.
Okay, so creating or building electric vehicle batteries is pretty new to the United States. What kind of skills do you have to have? What's your skill level to be able to get into this job, Joel?
That's a great question. And, you know, we're talking 5,000 jobs here in Kentucky, right? So the skills are, yes, all across the board. We're going to need everyone's skills. And from an education perspective, it could be a high school diploma all the way through an advanced degree. From an experience perspective, it could be someone with one day, someone with 30 years, and everything in between. So yes, there are positions that are on the manufacturing plant floor. There are also office-like positions within the plant. So tons of different jobs, tons of different skills. That's why, you know, as Tyler has mentioned, you know, we encourage individuals to go to the Blue Oval SK site, look for positions that you feel most qualified for, and apply.
Sounds good. So here's a question that we do get often, and people say, how many of the 5,000 jobs will be local jobs versus South Korean? Tyler, what's your answer to that?
Yeah, it is true. We are an international company, and we do have inputs from our other parent company. Everybody's familiar with Ford, SKON is our other parent company, and the expertise that they bring is that battery manufacturing technology. The jobs, however, here in Kentucky will be all-American jobs. Now, we will have team members from our parent company, SKON, who come to Kentucky to help us with setting up our equipment for the first time, and also training our team members on how to utilize that equipment. This is one of the first times that this technology has ever been introduced in the U.S. And our partners at our parent company, they are excited to share that technology with us and to train our team members on how to utilize it. So while we will have team members who come temporarily to help us with the setup of that equipment and training, those roles are temporary. The 5,000 jobs that we talk about are all right here in the U.S., right here in Kentucky.
And you may see some of those temporary workers in our community, right, Sarah?
Yes, I was just going to note that, and Andy Games has mentioned this before in a meeting, and I really liked whenever he said, "We're probably going to see them at our restaurants and different places, especially in Elizabeth Town. Just make them feel welcome." I can't imagine moving to South Korea, right in the middle of Seoul, and trying to navigate and change my life like that. And so, yes, give them that southern hospitality and make them feel welcome.
So here's another question that we often get asked, and will these jobs be union jobs? Joel, I'm going to let you take them.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, the Blue Oval SK employees in both Kentucky and Tennessee, if provided that opportunity, will have to make that choice for themselves. Simple.
That's pretty cut and dry. So are there any specific skills that you are looking for? I know you said, "We need people at all levels." But when you're talking about the person as a whole, what are we looking for in the people who are applying?
Yeah, I'd love to talk on that. The skills that we're looking for, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the technology is coming to us from South Korea. So what we're looking for are people who love learning, who are open to new ideas and new concepts in manufacturing, and want to be trained and want to grow their skillset. That's absolutely a key in these roles that we're offering. So natural, or those who gravitate toward learning and want to grow themselves are going to do great in these roles. The other thing I would mention is, you have to have a high level of self-integrity. We are looking for people who are passionate about manufacturing and are passionate about seeing Blue Oval SK's success. And so we need team members who can help us drive that success. After all, we are standing up this plant from the ground up, as I talked about. So a high level of self-integrity and accountability is important for our team members to bring to the table, and that's absolutely something we look for during our selection process. So I hope that helps.
And I just want to emphasize, Tyler keeps talking about how we're a startup. We are. We're a multi-billion dollar startup, but we do not have all the answers quite yet. We are working through it. Sometimes we don't even know what we need until we reach for it and then realize that, oh, we need to create a policy around that. So we are still learning as we go and growing as we go. We talked a little bit about some of the short-term temporary workers at Blue Oval SK. Why do we need to have these temporary workers? What can you share about that?
Yeah, there's, so the battery manufacturing process is highly automated. It's pretty fascinating whenever you walk into the plant to see that battery be developed. It's completely self-contained process where we have highly technical robots and manufacturing technology that's creating that battery. And so that technology is manufacturer, or that the information that's required for that technology to operate is created and comes from our parent company. And so the need comes from that intellectual knowledge being moved here for our team members to learn how to perform those tasks. And then just the battery, the education on battery manufacturing as a whole is a new concept here in the U.S., and so educating on that concept as well. So it's setting up the equipment, training on it, but also training on that overall process.
And I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, either Joel or Tyler. Can you describe what it's like working inside a battery plant? What are the conditions like?
I'll take that, and then Joel, you help me where I drop. So it's actually pretty exciting. When you walk into the facilities, they are very clean. You could eat off of the ground. Whenever you manufacture a battery, you have to have a very clean environment where that takes place. And so our facilities are air-controlled, they're heated and cooled, and they also, the manufacturing process itself does not require a high amount of manual labor. It's more about helping that machine operate and making sure that everything is going according to the metrics that we set. So that operator is working with that machine in that clean environment, not a whole lot of manual labor. It's really a great job.
Did he leave anything out, Joel?
No, he did really well.
Okay. And I promise, we're going to get to our other panelists, but we just wanted to make sure that everybody's got a clear understanding about the jobs that we're offering at Blue Oval SK. And you can see those at BlueOvalSK.com. But Joel, when are these jobs available again?
Yeah, as Tyler mentioned, I mean, now, you know, there are jobs posted now, there'll be jobs posted through 2023 and through 2024. And as Tyler mentioned, engineers, production operators, maintenance techs. Actually, at the end of October, early November, we should be onboarding our next wave of hourly employees, so that's exciting. And so, yeah, so go to the site, as we mentioned, and post for the positions that you feel you're most qualified for. In addition to, I don't think we mentioned it early on, we do have an HR table out there in front as you come in, so there's some professionals out there to help assist you with, you know, the website, or if you have any other questions.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing with us tonight. So now we're going to talk about environmental health and safety, and turn things over to Matt. Matt, tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
Good evening, everyone. Try again. Good evening, everyone. I actually have a lot enough voice, you could probably hear me if I... My name is Matt Masaros. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Risk Manager for Blue Oval SK in the Glendale sites. I have been on board since October of last year. Actually, I was thinking about it on my drive in. I was actually at the Bardstown Bourbon Festival when I got the call that I was being assigned here. I am a, one, I love Kentucky. If you can tell by my accent, I am not originally from Kentucky. I'm from Ohio. That's where I grew up, and that's where my duty stations have been until I was assigned here. If you got talking to me here, you will know that I am a big advocate of your brown water. I've spent a lot of time here. I have an extensive collection that I spend a lot of time justifying to my wife. So if we want to have our own panel afterwards and discuss that, we can do that, too. So anyway, that's enough about me.
But that's the only kind of brown water we want to talk about, right? Want to see. All right, all right. Matt, we really want to reassure folks that you and many other members of our Blue Oval SK team are working to make sure that the plant, these plants are safe as possible. Just tell us about the precautions that Blue Oval SK is taking when it comes to safety.
Okay, so, you know, environmental stewardship is one of our core tenants. It's ingrained in all of our processes, including our employee culture. And when we look at our processes, we want to make sure that we meet or exceed all regulatory requirements. Also, we put pretty high standards on ourselves as a company. I mean, you know, with Ford Motor Company and SK, we bring a lot to the table and have high expectations for ourselves. So in that regard, you know, there's things that we do, like, or we're not doing in some regard, is no underground storage tanks, containment systems that drain back to dedicated wastewater collection points. Those are huge in the ability to keep chemicals out of our process waters and make sure they don't make it to soils, groundwater, or, you know, runoff for that matter. We're going to be fully permitted by the Kentucky Environmental and Energy Cabinet for wastewater and especially air emissions. And we are developing comprehensive compliance programs to ensure that, you know, that, combine that with our culture and our employee training, that we're going to be 100% compliant with state, federal, and local regulations.
That's pretty amazing. I hope that provides folks with some reassurance about how seriously we take environmental safety.
Absolutely.
So how is Blue Oval SK planning to respond if there's some sort of potential emergency, something like a fire?
Okay. So, you know, our employees are our greatest asset, and I work with a ton of great people right now, and we're looking for more, especially environmental health and safety. You know, their safety and the safety of our communities is paramount, and we take it very seriously. You know, when we look at our processes, we do extensive risk assessments. We've been doing those for over a year now. As a matter of fact, my counterpart from Tennessee is in Korea right now doing those risk assessments. We've also hired independent third parties to take a look at our processes to make sure that we've got things right. You know, our fire protection systems, they're designed to meet or exceed code requirements for not only detection but fire suppression. We're actively engaged with our community agencies to make sure that we have emergency response plans that are comprehensive and that we have the assets we need to protect our business operations and those of the community.
So Matt, can you tell us, what is our emergency response team?
Sure. That's an easy one. So we're going to have a dedicated emergency response team, and that is a team of individuals whose sole responsibility is to address the environmental health and fire needs of our facility. So in that regard, say we have an incidental spill, or we have someone that has a medical emergency, they're our first responders. Also, we're going to be onboarding a fire safety engineer here next week, actually, next Monday. That person is going to work very closely with the ERT, and also the local fire EMS to make sure our response actions meet or need the expectations of our community partners.
One of the questions that we often get is, should we be concerned about the power grid?
No. No, you should not be concerned about the power grid. So at Blue Oval SK in Glendale, we have two independent power feeds. If there's going to be a problem with the grid, it's not going to come from us. And if both of our power feeds go down because they're independent, we've got way bigger problems than what we're doing at this point. So, you know, basically, you know, that's why we have to have two feeds, so that we have continuous power for operations.
So it's almost a redundancy system?
Yeah. When, if one goes down, the other one takes up, and you don't miss a beat. They switch over like that.
Okay. But if the lights go out at your house, it's not our fault?
I didn't do it. It wasn't me.
Okay, okay.
I didn't plug in something.
Okay. So how will a spill or an accident be taken care of and not contaminate local water? You addressed some of what we're doing to protect our water supply, but what about spill?
So, you know, I've already talked about our emergency response team, and that is really going to be our first action when we address things. I guess, you know, thinking about it more broadly, we're going to have comprehensive stormwater prevention, or pollution prevention plans, and spill prevention and control countermeasures, and really good strategies to prevent those things. You know, I've already talked about no underground storage tanks and some of our extensive containment structures, which go a long way. But I think the real key is, from the background of not only Ford Motor Company and SK, is that we've learned that if you have tight control of your processes, and your people do the right thing and have the right culture, that it's easier for us to stay compliant with our permits and the local laws and regulations.
Thank you, Matt. I actually feel more reassured.
Sure, no problem.
Now I'd like to turn things over to Dr. Pate from the Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College, ECTC, one of our great partners. Dr. Pate, could you please share some of your background and information about the ECTC and the training that you guys are going to be offering for folks to come work at Blue Oval SK?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'm from just south of Detroit. About 850 miles south of Detroit, but I am happy to be here with these folks on this stage. I think our college has been preparing for this for many, many years, as we have kind of evolved into, deeper into some of the technical aspects of collegiate training, but also in our workforce solutions department, becoming much more customizable in the things that we do. So, you know, I'm very happy to be here. I myself have been here in our A-Town, Hardin County, Lincoln Trail family for almost seven years now. So I've learned a lot about the region and how we can best leverage some of these resources. But what we will be doing specifically with this project, the Kentucky Legislature allocated $25 million to ECTC to construct a training facility on-site. So that'll be kind of ground zero for training once employees have been hired for the first few years. But that's where we will do a lot of the interactions that are going to transition people into these jobs, these 5,000 jobs, that are largely going to be to produce a very high-level battery for Ford and Lincoln vehicles.
A lot of people want to know, what's actually going to be taught? What does the curriculum look like?
So when we're onboarding, you know, that curriculum is really going to be about the job-specific skills that are needed to enter a particular job. And some of that will be about the proprietary knowledge of the SKON processes for the development of a battery. But some of that training will also be safety. You know, there's a lot of safety training that's going to go into onboarding to step into this Blue Oval SK plant. There's also a lot to do with metric conversions, with precision measurement. So really, we're going to talk about, at that training facility, taking an existing skillset that is related to manufacturing and really honing that to this particular job. Of course, if we want to just go ahead and talk about some of the training, you know, at the college that will lead to those roles, what we really want to focus on for the production positions is the mechatronic training. And that's, it's a specific niche of advanced manufacturing training. Those who've been trained in industrial maintenance, robotics, automation, those kind of things are already really largely trained in mechatronic operations. But we're also, as has been mentioned here, you know, we're also preparing people for jobs in IT that are going to be on-site, for HR manager roles, for accounting roles, business roles. There is a lot of, lot of fields that are going to be available through training with ECTC to be eligible for employment at Blue Oval SK.
So a lot of our team had the pleasure of being with you when the governor came down and broke ground on the ECTC. That was, was that March? That was back in March?
It was, it was. Beautiful day, as I remember.
It was. How's the facility coming along now? When's it going to be done?
I need some wood. Somebody please knock on the stage or something for me. So far, it is on schedule. That will count. So the facility, which is a 42,000-square-foot facility with that $25 million invested So the facility, which is a 42,000-square-foot facility with that $25 million investment, will be open April of 2024. So we're closing in on that, and construction is moving very well. Be excited to open up that level of training to employees. There's going to be some really first-class facilities and labs available, including virtual reality labs, that are going to allow us to safely put employees into that production environment with no exposure to any dangerous situations. You know, so the first exposure to these jobs will be done in virtual reality or a very controlled ergonomic lab there in the facility.
So we know that the training curriculum is being created today for the program that will be taught at ECTC, but what if students, they want to sign up for a class and then walk right into a job with Blue Oval SK? What do you tell them?
I tell them, first of all, know what you're good at doing, and then let's talk about, because whatever you're good at doing, there will be a job available at Blue Oval SK in that field. So, but, but the number one question I get asked is about the production environment, the manufacturing environment. And again, I think that mechatronic focus is really where we need to start, if you want to build skills to walk right into that job. But again, you know, I think we really have to do a good job of not just meeting one area of need for the company, but truly, you know, make sure that there is no IT needs in the workforce, that there are no office needs in this workforce. So talk to us if you're interested. We've had folks who can help you navigate your particular skill set to a job in Blue Oval SK.
So I want to give you an opportunity to brag on ECTC a little bit, and just tell us what other programs that you were offering, not just training for Blue Oval SK employees, but what you're doing for the community and other educational programs.
Well, you know, a whole lot of what we do as a community college is, first of all, we want to provide relevant programs, but we also want to provide a lot of support for our students to get through those programs, because, you know, they're rigorous, they're tough, it's not easy to get through these courses and these programs. So, and, you know, a lot of folks and our students have life barriers. It's not just academic barriers, you know, that pop up. So we really want to provide as much support as we can for our students. So things like our success hub, where you can find a one-stop shop for things like tutoring, like educational support, but also find life support, you know, for those non-academic barriers. One of the greatest partnerships that we have had in the past several years is the Family Scholar House, who we work with to really provide kind of a case management service for our students to meet their needs where they are. And they work with community organizations all throughout our region to help lift students up. And what we have done to partner with that organization has helped our students complete their programs at an exponentially increased rate. The most exciting thing that I could probably say about where we are currently going with that partnership is the efforts that we're undertaking to bring the residential program here to Hardin County, on campus at Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College. And the residential program of the Family Scholar House is basically a 48-unit apartment home complex that will remove homelessness as a barrier for students as they are trying to get through their academic programs. So we are well underway on a campaign to make this happen. We're just over a million dollars away from making, breaking ground on this facility. And every two to three years, we will be moving 48 folks who are coming from a homeless situation out into stable housing, into the workforce, and moving 48 new residents in so that we change their lives and we change our community.
That's pretty awesome. I'm actually pretty excited about that program too, so great to hear about it, and I'm glad you were able to share that with the audience tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
One other question, so you don't have to work at Blue Oval SK or be training to work at Blue Oval SK to use the ECTC at Glendale, or do you?
So you're talking about the training facility onsite?
Yeah.
So I would say, short-term, the answer is yes. You know, as we think about onboarding 5,000 individuals, that facility will probably, for the first two or three years, be solely dedicated to that onboarding training, probably be running multiple shifts of that training. Eventually, yes, we will have that opened up to the community, to our students, to come and learn the skills that would lead to that job. But probably for the first two to three years, I would not advise going to that facility to enter a brand-new program to learn a skill. That will be done either at our Elizabeth Town campus, the Litchfield campus, we're actually constructing a new building and going to start offering advanced manufacturing training there in Litchfield. Springfield already has manufacturing programs. But if you're interested, anyone's interested in any of the fields that lead to employment with Blue Oval SK, just go to elizabetetown.kctcs.edu, look in that advanced manufacturing curriculum or the curriculum that most interests you, and get connected with a career advisor at the college.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Pate. I want to turn things over now to Sarah Vaughn, and who is our community engagement coordinator for Kentucky. And Sarah is native to Hardin County. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, thank you. So I am born and raised here in Hardin County, was actually with the city of Elizabeth Town for the last little over 11 years. And through that career, I was able to gain a lot of contacts, resources, experience that really got me ready for this position. And I started with Blue Oval SK back in April as community engagement coordinator for Kentucky Lead. And a lot of folks say, what exactly does that mean? And it's very self-explanatory, actually. Community engagement is really the boots-on-the-ground engaging in our community. And it's very important that Blue Oval SK not only found someone to engage in the community, but found someone that was from the area, to know the people, to know the area, and to be able to tap in to the folks and find out where, what events we needed to be at, who we needed to talk to, and exactly how we needed to be a good neighbor.
So you're the point of contact?
Yes, I am.
What can you tell us about how Blue Oval SK has been engaging in the community so far?
Yes, so since I came onboard in April, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars, literally, on local nonprofit organizations. Just here recently, we sponsored with CASA of the Heartland, which helps children who are going through the court system and dealing with all kinds of things there. We sponsored the Hardin County School Stability Program, and they help children who are dealing with and experiencing homelessness. And then just yesterday, I had a really cool experience going down to Mammoth Cave National Park. Every single year, and I had no idea that they did this, they have a canoe kayak Green River cleanup. And folks volunteer their time, they jump on a canoe or kayak, and a dog was a part of it, which was so awesome. And they go about 19 miles with their grabbers and their trash bags, and they clean up Green River through Mammoth Cave National Park. And we were able to sponsor that. So I was able to go and take some photos. Unfortunately, I did not have on the right clothes to float the river, but I plan on it next year, and I'm going to get some of you guys to go along with me. But it was a really cool experience that Blue Oval SK could be a part of and just really being there. We also engage, just face-to-face, being at different Rotary meetings. I have several of you in here, I've spoken at different events that you've been at, handing out school supplies on the square in Hodgenville right before school started. There are so many different ways.
And our team, I've noticed, is just organically, they want to volunteer. It seems like we've had, we actually had a couple of surprises where people from our team just sort of showed up and started volunteering at local agencies, and we were like, oh, we get, we got tagged on social media, and that's how we found out about it.
Yes, yes, it was amazing. They just started packing backpacks at Feeding America, and they started helping in a local rescue, and we have a very, a very ready-to-go team. It's amazing.
So that's the kind of culture we want to create, is a culture of employees who love their community, love where they work, and want to give back to the community and look for opportunities to volunteer and not be voluntold, but actually volunteer. So it's great. What's our mission when it comes to sponsorships? I know that a lot of people want us to engage in sponsorship, but what can you share about our mission and kind of our philosophy behind that?
So I guess at the foundation of it, we want to, we're committed to being good neighbors, and within that, we want to provide essential services to people that are in need. We also want to enhance or beautify the neighborhoods and the areas in which we live and which we work. We also would like to support education, especially in the mechatronics, the STEM, the science, the math. And we're also very committed to organizations that are doing good things in the environment, obviously, as well. We're trying to do things that are building good things in the future.
And because you're the point of contact, if people are looking for a sponsorship, you're the person to reach out to?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. We do get this question a lot. How do you do business with Blue Oval SK?
So the best way to reach out, if it is sponsorships, community engagement, doing business, any, any of those types of things, in order to reach me is, or anybody from our team member really directly, is through our website, bluevelvesk.com, and click on the "Connect With Us" tab. And you can pick your, your community engagement, becoming a vendor, whatever it might be, give us some information, and it'll go to the appropriate team member. But that is the best way and the easiest way.
And sometimes people ask for us to be speakers at their events. You can also ask through that portal as well?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Can you give it up for the panel? They did a great job. Thank you. So now I want to read off some of the questions that were submitted by community members over the past week. We had an RSVP that we put on our website to have people sign up, so we could gauge how many people were going to be in attendance tonight, and everybody had an opportunity, if they wanted to, to submit a question. Some of the questions were repeated, so we are going to try and answer as many of them as we can this evening. And I'll start off by reading the first name of the person who submitted the question, so that you know I'm not just making it up randomly. And, and we'll try and direct the panel to answer some of those questions as they are asked. And even if I directed the question to one of the panelists, if you guys feel like, if anybody else has information that they want to add, please do not hesitate to chime in. Okay. So here's a question from Stacy. Can you provide information about job opportunities and interview opportunities for service members transitioning out of the military? Tyler, why don't you take that one?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Thanks for that question, Stacy. So we care a lot about recruiting our military service members. We are expanding our partnerships with Fort Knox and Fort Campbell, and spend a lot of time recruiting in those areas. And right now, all of our applicants go through the full competitive process, whether they are military service members or someone with, you know, who is local versus working somewhere else. All of our team members complete the same interview and selection process. So we advise all of our team members to prepare accordingly for those interviews where they're meeting with our team members. Have a good understanding of the role that you are applying for, what is in the job description, you know, how can you expand on that as a member of our team? And so, you know, we advise all team members, military service or otherwise, to go online and apply. Their process will be the same.
Okay. Anybody want to add? You got anything, Joel? Okay. Here's a question from Rebecca. I've heard you aren't, are not, accepting applicants with under six years of experience. When will this change, and is that true?
Yeah, so we are, I think this is specific to maybe maintenance. There is a requirement for our maintenance technician to have at least six years of working experience. We recently, this is exciting news, so recently, last week, maybe the week before, we posted what we call the associate technician. So for team members who don't have the level of experience required to be a maintenance technician, there's opportunities for you to plug in as well, to get the training with our team, and then maybe to move to that maintenance technician level, once you do have the years of experience.
Okay, good to know. Here's a question from Keisha, and we've answered this many times, but it doesn't hurt to repeat it again. I'd love to work for the Blue Oval SK team. We'd love to have you. How do I apply? Joel?
Yeah, I mean, we have stated it many times, yeah, just go to bluevelvesk.com, you know, the jobs are posted there, and apply to the one that you feel most qualified for.
Here's a question from Reginald. When is the Ford Assembly Plant in Louisville, Louisville, did I say that right? Louisville relocating to Glendale? This is a persistent rumor, and to our knowledge, there is no truth to it, it's just not true. The joint venture between Ford and SK ON is about growth. The new facilities in Tennessee and in Kentucky represent opportunity for Ford to grow their business and increase their manufacturing footprint in North America. So to our knowledge, that's not true. Another question from Amos. As a lifelong Glendale resident, we've heard a lot about all the jobs and development that will be coming, but for the current residents, we have not seen any community involvement from Blue Oval SK as of yet. We've only had disruption to our way of life. What community projects are you doing currently and planning in the future for the Glendale community? For example, Nolan River Blue Way ramps or parks sponsoring Taylor Bend Park or other parks sponsoring or providing community events or facilities? Sarah, I'm going to let you handle that.
Yes, so last year, last year and the beginning of this year, Ford and Barton Mallow went together, and they actually, they put in, I don't want to give an exact number, but it was close to or well over $100,000 between sidewalks before the Crossing Festival sponsorship of the Crossing Festival, and they also helped to fund the Glendale Fire Department. The Crossing Festival in Glendale doesn't just underwrite the festival costs. The Crossing Festival in Glendale, which I'm sure everyone in here has been to, or at least knows about, the money that flows through that event actually goes back into the community and goes back into the park system there, goes back into, they still sponsor East Harden Middle School students, even though East Harden has moved to Elizabeth Town technically. They, they put playground equipment in, they purchased land in Glendale that they utilize for different things, the list goes on and on. They just actually paid for an upgrade in the lighting on the ball fields, they're going to continue putting money into that. And so that has already been done, and then we have also, Blue Oval SK for this year, we are sponsoring at a $20,000 level the Crossing Festival as well, which again, will go back into the local Glendale area. And then as far as the other projects, the Taylor Bend Park, we've been in conversations with, with Ford Fund as that being a potential project. We haven't, there haven't been any official conversations yet or any decisions made. One thing I did not mention earlier, and I apologize, is that we are discussing a grant program with Blue Oval SK for the future, so something that's larger than a general sponsorship, is we're hoping to have that rolled out and announced in the future, so stay tuned, but maybe that could be a project that we are able to do in the future.
Thank you, appreciate that. And we really do want to be good community partners, so we are looking for ways to engage. We are a new company, give us a little time to get our legs underneath us so that we can prioritize where we want to put our sponsorship. Sarah mentioned them a little bit earlier, things that we want to do, beautify the community, engage in STEM, help with those who are underserved, and looking for volunteer opportunities. So we are here, we are going to be active, and we are going to continue to give our time and treasure, so please understand that.
And if I can add, we do need to start making some money here in the next few years, so we can increase those budgets as well. We have not started making those products yet.
2025. Okay, so this question is from Bobby. Please explain the dangers of the EV batteries and the plan to dispose of them or anything else that is dangerous to the environment. environment. Matt, that's a natural question for you.
Yeah, that's mine. Okay. So Bobby, was it?
Bob.
Bobby, that's a wonderful question. And actually, a few weeks ago, I was giving a talk on these topics, Speaker Bureau kind of thing, to the West Tennessee LEPC, which is a bunch of fire and EMA responders. And I talked for an hour and 10 minutes. So we're not going to do that to you folks. So I'm going to just keep it very high level. So basically, we're going to produce battery cells and modules. Basically, we're going to talk about the cells. They're about that wide and that thin, et cetera. I wish I had a show and tell, but I had it when I did my talk. So anyway, so those go through an extensive quality control process. And if anywhere during the QC process that those batteries, or those, excuse me, cells fail, or for any other reason, they go through a cell discharge process. So basically, I really can't get into all the details. I don't think we have that kind of time. But so basically, those batteries are put through a process where they're rendered, neutralized from electric charge, and basically, they don't present an environmental hazard after that. They go off for environmental recycling, metals recycling after that process. As far as hazardous waste goes, you know, it's surprising with such a big facility, not all the processes are going to produce hazardous waste. Now, I'm not saying we're not going to produce hazardous waste, but a lot of the processes are closed loop. So the chemical manufacturers that provide us the chemistries that we need, we return that to them, and they either reformulate or they recycle that material. And along the same lines, we're actively engaging partners that are total waste managers. There'll be third parties that will independently manage our wastes. They'll make sure that we comply with all regulations, and they're going to handle things like rubbish, recycling, has and non-has waste, all that other stuff. So, you know, we've got a good handle on it right now.
Thank you, Matt. This question is from Tyler, not our Tyler, another Tyler. For maintenance, what are the expected shift schedules? Joel?
Yeah, I can take that.
Okay.
Yeah, so current state, we're basically working at a day shift schedule. All right, we're doing a lot of training, a lot of learnings, et cetera. Now, future state, production state, it will be 12-hour schedule, and the maintenance department will, they'll support that shift.
So 12-hour shifts?
Correct.
Okay. Here's a question from a different Bobby, and this is Bobby with a Y. The last Bobby was Bobby with an IE. What does "in interview," in interview as in quotes, mean on the job application? Tyler?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Thank you, Bobby with a Y. There are a lot of candidates who are in our process currently, and this is a natural question. I love this question, actually. There are, as I mentioned earlier, several steps in the process. Some candidates may see under review, and some candidates may say, may see interview. These steps define which part of the process the candidate is in. So a candidate who is in interview is someone who has been reached out to by our team, an interview has been scheduled and possibly even performed, and that candidate may stay in that interview stage until it's time for the candidate to be brought in to the company. So many candidates who have been onsite with us, have spoken with our hiring managers, may see this status, and they may see it until it's time for us to pull that person forward. We are interviewing many candidates, and we are hiring from many positions. Both of those things are not necessarily always happening at the same time. So candidates may interview, they may need to, they may wait a couple of weeks before hearing from our team, and that would be the reason why Bobby's seeing an interview.
Okay. Just go over again really quickly. If you want to check the status of your application, where do you go again?
Yes, you go to Workday through our website. So go to bluevelvesk.com, find the page where you submitted your application by clicking on Career Opportunities, sign in to the account that you created, and then you can click on your name in the top right corner and see the status of your application.
Okay. Patrice has this question. How soon will everyone know when to apply for jobs? Well, right now, I can answer that. And will other plants that transfer from Ford get first dibs before others are able to apply? So I guess the question is, if you are coming from Ford, or I guess SK for that matter, do you get first dibs?
This goes back to, this is very similar to the veterans question from earlier. All of our candidates do go through a competitive process. So whether they are current Ford employees, SK On employees, or any organization or background, they do go through an interview and are selected based on their skills and experience. There's no preferential treatment depending on who they work for.
Okay. And a question from Jenna, I think I'm saying that right. I would like to know, since applying and having an interview, when will we get the call to start training? So if you got an interview and you're hired, when do you start training?
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Tyler, no problem. Yeah, so if, you know, basically what happens is if you interview and you get the position, you will be advised by the onboarding specialist when your new employee orientation will start, and then the training starts right after that. So some of the things Dr. Page talked about, safety, HR policies, et cetera, going right into quality, right into the manufacturing process. And so that's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay, very good. So those are the questions that were submitted to us online. As I said, some of them were repeat questions, so we tried to break that down and answer as many as possible. And now, we are going to turn things over to the live Q and A portion. And so if you have a question in the audience, we'd be happy to take that question and to the best of our ability, answer that question. If we can answer that question, we can take your name and get your information after this wraps up and try to respond to you if we don't have the answer right away. I would ask that everybody allow for people to ask their questions, just one question per person. And please don't talk over each other. We want to be able to hear the questions and then also hear the responses. So with that, I've got two team members who are in the audience, and Mallory, I think you're over here to my right. Why don't we start with you?
Thank you.
And say your name, please.
Testing. My name is Gary Hewitt. On your shift schedules, you say they are 12 hours. Are they 3223, or are they four on, four off?
Thank you. I think I heard your name was Gary. Thank you, Gary. It's 3223, four crew.
My name is Cheryl, and one of the questions I have is about transportation. I relocated here, and there's no mass transportation here. I come from a very large, well, about a million people from the city that I came from before. So as a former zoning commissioner and a professional planner, transportation to a community a long way from Radcliffe and the installation to your new plant, is there any plans for public transportation or some type of contracting transportation to help? People really do want to work, I have found out as someone who relocated here, but transportation is a real problem. And there is an employment group that I've been at conferences at the last five years. Transportation has been an issue, but I'm hoping that Ford is also thinking about that as you're going to be hiring these 5,000 people.
Thank you for the question. And the answer is yes. We are still evaluating programs and opportunities where we can help our people get to work and be at work. We know that several community leaders are also engaged in looking at ways to aid in transportation and other amenities, such as childcare. We have not found any concrete solutions at this time, but it's something that we continue to explore. As we move along and as more research is done into how do we make those improvements, we will be sure to pass that information along to the public. But it is a, it's a challenge, and it's something that we do recognize.
Hello, my name is Trent. I had a quick question. I got a call from a recruiter, and they had went down the line, talked about how the training would be in Georgia and then at ECTC. And they said, the recruiter specifically said that after the training and after some point in time in 2024, when production starts, at first, it would be a day shift. She said at first, and you clarified it, I believe, the HR manager. And then she said that you would be able to choose after that between day shift and night shift. She specifically said that. And then when I got interviewed, I mentioned that to the individuals that were interviewing me, and they said that they did not hear that, and that they said something different of you would be on first shift, and then you would give a two-week notice, perhaps, if you go to night shift and vice versa. So I was just hoping if you all could elaborate on that and talk if, you know, because if that was, you know, just some miscommunication, perhaps. Or do you all know specifically, you know, the pertinent information to that question? Thank you.
So, and so I think I can answer a little bit about like future state, and maybe even, you know, you talked about 2024 a little bit. Tyler, you may want to answer the first part, okay? So, you know, and we talked about it a little bit up here. We're moving at a pace where sometimes we have the policies and procedures completely defined, and sometimes we don't. So for the initial folks that we are hiring, I know a lot of those folks are anticipating like, hey, I want to be able to choose what shift I want, whether it's days or nights, et cetera. No, we are going to put together a policy. It's not put together yet, but by 20, you know, by the time we go into production, where there's a means to which individuals will be able to get to their shift preference. It's not defined yet. I don't have the solution, but we know that individuals are going to want, some individuals are going to want to perhaps change shift at some point. So, you know, I know that's not a great, great answer, but it's, I just want to let you know that, you know, future state, we should have a policy or procedure to deal with that. Now, as far as the dialogue you had with the recruiter, I'm not really sure. Maybe Tyler, you can help?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it opened up something that I want to talk about with you all here. There are, you know, we're at the process now where recruiters are reaching out to candidates and talking about what to expect. And I mentioned early on that I was excited about Blue Oval SK because we're standing this thing from the ground up. And one thing that's exciting for our team members who are coming onboard early is that we're not, so while our operating shifts in future state will be 12 hours, they are currently day shift hour, or days primarily in standard hours. So you're working eight to five. There is travel to Georgia for our first team members who are coming onboard. What I want to stress here publicly is that that is a requirement early on and not an ongoing practice. We want our team members to travel to Georgia, where we have a sister plant that is owned by our parent company, to learn about the battery manufacturing process. So, you know, if you're looking for new exposure, you're looking to grow your skill set, there's never been a better time to join, and there's not going to be a better time. Join now so that you can get that exposure directly from our manufacturing facility in Georgia. I think that's a really exciting thing for new hires. So yes, there is some travel where new hires are going to Georgia for a short time. That's going on this year and early into next year. That will not be a practice that continues. So you asked about clarity on shifts and preference. There is a means that Joel talked about where you will be able to declare your preference for shifts. I would say right now, you know, I want to make it clear, we're not at that shift schedule yet. We're working toward it as we staff up our plants and even get into our plant. We're not quite there yet. So maybe that offers some clarity to you.
So the short answer, it's a work in progress. We're still working on the policy because, you know, we reached for it because we needed it, and it wasn't there. So now we've got to, now we've got to build it. Some more questions? Dominic?
It is David Green, and I actually live over off Gilead Church Road. And you all mentioned the idea of how you are going into the different areas of the community, and you're fixing this area up, you're fixing that area up. My concern is, I realize you're in the middle of construction, so yes, it's going to be a mess. We all know that. But as you drive down Gilead Church Road and you see the brush and all of the weeds that have grown up through your fence and through the other areas around there, is there any way, first, can you clear that up a little bit for everybody so it doesn't look quite so bad? And when the time comes, will all that be maintained? Will it be cleaned up and prettied up for our area over there to look nice once again?
Oh, yes. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. They're so busy building out there sometimes, you know, some things like making sure that the grass is maintained around the fence line and other things like that get neglected. I will be sure to take that back to our construction partners and our management team at Ford Land so that that can be addressed and taken care of. And they will work on a solution for that. They've been very good partners. A lot of the folks in Glendale have expressed concerns about things, and we have tried to respond as quickly as we can to get those concerns addressed. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And once it's completed, of course, it will be our property. So we will be maintaining it and keeping it up.
I had a question. You said that you was going to be on a 12-hour day schedule. In your skilled trades, what will that 12 hours be? What's the start time? Do you know?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, you know, what we're at so far with it, with the start times, as well as the shift pattern, is they're 12-hour shifts, so it's going to be six and roughly 6:45, something like that. So six to 6:45, and then six to 6:45. You know, it's continual, with different crews working different days. And that was the question that gentleman had over on the right side there. I think it was Gary. What is the three on, two off, two on, three off schedule?
There is being, can you hear me? There is being concern about the cost of these batteries for new cars. I have been told anywhere between $4,000 to $20,000 for your vehicle. Is there, you may not even know this answer, is there some time in the future that you think these prices on the batteries will come down?
That is a good question. I'm not sure that it will be broken down like that. Once the cells are created and they leave us, it goes into a vehicle. So I would imagine that any kind of agreement or cost point that has to do with the battery would be in, let's say you had a warranty with the vehicle that you bought. I think it would be wrapped into that, but I can't tell you the individual price for a single battery. That's something that we can look into, though, and get your information and try and get you that answer. Or maybe put it as a social media post so we can share with everyone.
Hi, my name is Cheryl. We've heard a lot about the production jobs that you're going to have available, but what about the office jobs? When will those be posted? And we'll have more information on those.
Can you confirm I heard correctly that you want to know when our office or corporate roles will be posted?
Yes.
Okay. There are many actually already posted. We just hired several HR team members from the Kentucky area who are here with us this evening. And I'll take this time to say they're going to be in the lobby, so stop by, get some information from them, meet them. I know they'd be glad to shake your hand and meet you. It will be ongoing. You know, we will have positions in accounting and purchasing with our external affairs team out doing community engagement. And it's hard to give a timeline on the specific position because it's so broad, but we have several posted already, and we're going to continue to post for those positions. So if you don't see what you want to see right now, if you're, you know, the job that you're looking for isn't there, my advice to you would be to subscribe to our newsletter, because we publish that once per month. And at the bottom of that newsletter, we list all of the jobs that are currently posted. That way, you don't miss out on any opportunity. So how do you register for the newsletter? You go to our website, bluevelvesk.com, and there's You go to our website, blueovillesk.com, and there's a tab that's called Get Connected With Us. If you go there and you put in your information and say I'm interested in a job opportunity, we'll make sure that newsletter gets out to you. So, hope that helps.
Hello, my name is James Sharon. I live at 739 Gilead Church Road. I can hit either one of your buildings with a rock thrown from my yard, about halfway between the two of them. As the new road comes in or as our road gets straightened out, I live on the double S curve, there will be a lot in front of my house that belongs to you, but between me and the road. How much are you gonna send me that lot for so I don't have your little lot stuck right in front of my house before I can get to the road?
I'm just gonna give the short answer that is, sir, I don't know. But, you know, please talk to us after, we'll wait around for you and try and get some more information on that and try and get you an answer, okay? I'm sorry. I don't know.
Hi, my name is Ben. This question kind of dovetails a little bit into what Cheryl asked earlier. I'm very excited about Blue Oval coming and just the technical roles and batteries and all that stuff. After looking at the jobs that are posted, unfortunately, they're, they're priced out for me. The wages are too low for me to consider them, but I'm very interested in, in what might be some of the hourly wages that are higher or more technical things. I'm very interested, of course, in the mechatronic things that you were saying. Are those the roles that we're looking at that are the ones that are, are being offered in the moment? Or will there be space for kind of more technical roles for higher pay on an hourly basis?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the question. So, I mean, the, the hourly production operator and the maintenance tech roles with the price point that Tyler talked about earlier, that, I mean, that's the hourly wage for those roles. I mean, anything more technical than that is gonna be in your engineering space, maybe IT. But that, but right now, the, those hourly roles are as technical as they get.
Yeah, I'd love to add on this. One of the things that Joel talked about earlier is, and even Ursula, that we are always evaluating our positions that are posted and the wages that go along with them. We study the market to determine, we talk with third-party consultants who help us, would gather that market data and inform our decisions as we benchmark. So I would encourage you to continue to stay in touch with us. If you don't see the opportunity at the wage that you're looking for now, I don't want to eliminate that for anybody in the, in the future. Just continue to view our website and to view those roles because as they alluded to, we reevaluate these things all of the time. So please continue to stay in touch with us and if you don't see what you're looking for right now, give us a little bit of time.
I think we have time for about two, maybe three more questions.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jose from the gentleman from ECTC. Very excited to hear about the 48 spaces or the building that can house 48 people to get what we label people as homeless off the street. I'm interested though, if you could discuss, or if you can't discuss now, if you could tell me where to go to get more information about the sustainability piece of the project. I think it's very interesting and exciting to hear that we can build it. But if you can discuss, obviously, the sustainability of such a, such a program as well as all aspects from how you're gonna provide transportation, how you're gonna feed them, how you're gonna provide a lot of the services they may need to and from hospital, et cetera, especially in Glendale where you may have to go to Elizabeth Town and neighboring towns to provide those services. So if you could just go into that a little bit, and if you can't, just tell me where I can go to find some information. Thank you.
Absolutely. And first of all, you're my favorite person in this room. You're the first person who's cared what I thought. My neighbor. Well, I appreciate you asking that question because I realized I also dropped one very big ball, Kenny Rambo, on, you know, when talking about the Family Scholar House projects, one of our fundraisers is actually raffling off a Ford Lightning. So give270.org or dot com, dot org.